Good morning and welcome to the November 4th Board of Supervisors meeting Trinity County. We will start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. I was going to start with Heidi because it's her 29th birthday, but she has a hoarse voice. So we will start off with Julia.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible and liberty and justice for all.
Good morning to everybody who made it in the inclement weather today. Quite a bit different than a couple of days back. We will start off with our first presentation, CEO Tadum.
Thank you Chair. Today is another great day for us. We're going to celebrate our Employee of the Year. As the Board knows, last year, we reinvigorated the employee recognition program. And we had Employee of the Quarters and we had our first Employee of the Year last year. We've had Employee of the Quarters again this year. And it is, you know, the information's already been announced, but we want to do it here publicly. And I'd like to call up, come on up please. So from our Auditor Controller Department, one of our newer members of the team, but she has incorporated herself very quickly, very well, and is a very, very positive role model for all of us to follow. She always has a positive attitude through some difficult, challenging times. You know, we're all understaffed, we're all over work, state always is providing much more oversight and help for us. And you know, our system challenges are there, but there's always a smile. There's always a willingness to say yes, to say yes, we will make this work. And that is very helpful from my position and from my point of view. As far as, you know, some workload, things like accounts payable. So you know, vendors getting paid, individuals, not payroll, but you know, vendors getting paid, the individuals in the special districts who work on our behalf. You know, all of the pay that goes through those organizations is because of our Employee of the Year here. Additionally, all the CalSal's payments, so you know, the EBT card that you might hear about. You know, those type of actions happen because an individual is sitting somewhere doing those things. They just don't happen. So oftentimes it's kind of gone unseen and it's unrecognized. And here's our time to, you know, provide a thank you and provide that recognition. So for that, we have a little bit, a little bit of hardware here. We've got a, we've got a plaque here for you. And then also, we have this for picture time when the Board comes up. We have a nice, nice little item here for you. Yes, very good. Well, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Opportunity to say anything if you want to, but you don't have to.
I didn't prepare for speech, but thank you everyone to recognize my, my work. I really, I always said I am blessed to be here with you guys, working, support the community. I love being here. I just moved three years ago and I feel I am part of this community. And I feel like one of them and I want to help as I can. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I could ask you to come up and do some pictures, please.
Congratulations. Thank you so much for all your hard work.
All right, now just that. Meatball people.
Okay, the third presentation is Health and Human Services, Veteran Services. Received an update from Veteran Services Officer Jennifer Dobbs, and adopted proclamation of appreciation which recognizes November as Veterans and Military Families Month. Jennifer, how are you?
Great, sir. How are you doing?
Good.
Good. It's way less intimidating with fewer people here. So Chairman Gogan, distinguished members of the Board, good morning. I didn't expect it to go this fast. I invited the VFW here. I think they're going to show up late, sorry. I'm Jennifer Dobbs, as you know, Trinity County Veteran Service Officer. I'd like to thank you for your support of Operation Green Light and designation of November as Veterans and Military Families Month. By displaying green lights on government buildings, residences, and places of business from November 4th through 11th, Trinity County residents can show their support for veterans and honor the sacrifices made by those who serve their nation as members of the armed forces. I had a slideshow. Thank you, you're awesome. Okay, so disclaimer, I'm terrible at PowerPoint. I apologize. It's probably boring. Next slide, please. So these are the total estimated veterans in Trinity County. We don't really know for sure because there's no census question on it last time and there's no registry. But approximately 1,013 veterans live here. Not quite half are receiving benefits, so I want to get that up a little bit more. And I'm still trying to track down who those 284 elusive ones are, so. Next slide, please. Here's some of the highlights from the last fiscal year. We served 551 individuals. A lot of those were repeat business. And then there were over 2,300 emails, phone calls, and in-person meetings. It was a busy year. I got 43 referrals from HHS that were formal and then several more that were informal. Filed 222 claims. And you can see the breakdown of the type of claims. Other is usually going to be education benefits of some site, some sort. Next slide, please. And that's where it breaks down by district. So red is from the previous fiscal year, blue is from '24, '25. The monthly benefits increasing, I'm going to keep trying to get more. Next slide, please. Retroactive payments for that fiscal year was over a million dollars. That's just for the claims that were granted during that time. And the monthly increase was almost $160,000. That's just money going straight to the veteran. It's not taxed, used as they please. Eleven more received healthcare, three were granted education benefits. That also includes college fee waiver, which is a state thing and not included in the previous slide. So right now, we're bringing in over $9 million from the VA to the county for last fiscal year. And recurring monthly payments are over $770,000. Next slide, please. This is a new thing. I was going to talk a little bit about how difficult it is for a veteran to get service-connected disability. So Veteran One initially filed a claim back in 2018 for a condition that was denied. He let it go and then contacted me in 2022 to file an appeal. Now, knowing the condition and what his exposure was, I knew that it was going to be very difficult because it would have to be directly related to some sort of toxin. And in order to file an appeal, you have to have new and relevant evidence according to the VA. So I went through his VA file, which was thousands of pages, read up on medical literature and Board of Veterans Appeals and Veterans Court of Appeals opinions. Now that is a lot easier nowadays because I can use AI for those last few things, but, which is fantastic. It saves a lot of time. I spent a lot of hours on this gentleman. And in the meantime, somebody suggested we file a different claim that they knew about a condition he had. He hadn't told me about. And so we filed a claim too. And then the PACD Act came out. That was what was passed in August of 2022 that expanded Agent Orange exposure areas and brought in burn pit toxin exposure. So I went through DEC logs because he was in the Navy and we were able to connect him to Agent Orange because of the PACD Act. And so we could file an appeal for that first condition. And he was granted both. And now he, he had over $30,000 in retro pay and gets over $4,000 a month. It's because of a law change and because he had a friend who was concerned about him. And it was life-changing for him. Veteran Two was also filed on the PACD Act. He already had a service-connected disability rating. And then he received a new diagnosis. We're in the middle of that claim. So we were able to file for that as well. And I don't want to go into obviously what his health concerns were, but if you have, say, diabetes and then end up with another service, another condition like peripheral neuropathy, you can connect that condition as well to service and get paid for it. So I think there was something else I wanted to talk about was, okay, yeah, this is a typical scenario. So anyway, we got this veteran, his claim's granted and he passed away almost immediately. That happens a lot sadly. It's awful, but his wife was eligible for a little bit of money. He went from making $42,000 a month to his wife getting $1,600 a month. So I just want to highlight how, how difficult it is for women once their spouses pass away. It's almost always the women. They get on very few benefits. And I know there's not much we can do about it, but if anybody feels like calling a congressman to change it, that would be a good thing to do. Next slide, please. Okay, here's some success stories. And by the way, this went way better in my head than it is right now. All right, so this veteran served in the 70s and originally filed a claim back then and was denied wrongly, but didn't appeal it, so the window closed. And then filed another appeal in the 90s and was denied wrongly again. Filed an appeal and the VA ignored it. And so when this veteran called me about education benefits, we went back through the file and discovered that that last appeal had never been adjudicated. So we filed another appeal. It was denied. We filed another appeal and it was finally granted. And the veteran got over a quarter of a million dollars in back pay. But had that veteran received the amount of money that was actually due back in the 70s, it would have been completely life-changing. And I'm not trying to say the VA is bad because the VA is great, but it's made up of people. And it's easy to make a mistake and really hard to fix those mistakes. And you have one year to appeal and once that closes, you're just out of luck. So I'm going to bring up claim sharks. There's been a few claim sharks targeting veterans in our area promising big payouts. They'll file a claim, they're not accredited, veteran's claim is denied, they don't know how to fix it. Claim sharks won't come back to them, but they've already paid them thousands of dollars. And it's illegal right now, but there's a California law trying to make it illegal in the state. That's before the legislature. And there's a law federally that's trying to give teeth to the current one that says that they're not allowed to operate. And there's a, another law that is trying to allow them to operate. So the one that was targeting our veterans locally is based in the Philippines and is on Facebook. And that's how they got ahold of them. So anyway, because they're not, they're not accredited, they don't have access to the VA system. They can't look at all the veterans' records. The veteran has to give them their login information. And then we'll have access to like the veterans' medical records that way. But that is something that really needs to be brought up, is to not use claim sharks. I don't, obviously, you guys pay for my salary, so everything is free for the veteran to use a county veteran service rep or a VA, VFW rep, anybody. But when they start paying for it is when they really start getting hurt. So I think there's going to be a lot more in the news about that. Veteran Two was a referral from HHS. And I love this story because it shows how the integrated services in the county really can help people. He was an elderly veteran who went to HHS and they told him to come see me. He was living in unsanitary conditions, substandard housing. I referred him over to a nonprofit called Nation's Finest in Redding and they got him in good housing. We filed a claim for him. It was, it was granted. And now he is a new person. He calls me laughing and joking. We're working on getting him more. But the fact that he had that wraparound care was so important because HHS hooked him up with, with their benefits and just, again, life-changing. So. Next slide, please. This is just random facts. It kind of breaks down the type of, of claims and the pay that was granted by, you know, male, female widows in era of service. And there is some overlap, you know, there's some Vietnam veterans that were also in Iraq and retired from the military and female retirees and all sorts of stuff. So just fun facts. I do have to say though, I have been so privileged. I worked with just last year, veterans, nine veterans who received Purple Hearts, five who were decorated for valor in combat. It's breathtaking the type of veteran we have in this community. So many incredible men and women out there, especially when you start to hear their stories. Spend a lot of my time crying after some of those guys leave my office. But so many also believe that they're not eligible for benefits because they say, "I have no service-connected disabilities." And it's only because you haven't talked to somebody who knows the law. What can be service-connected depends on the law and what you were exposed to. So we've got an 80% grant rate right now. 20% were denied. Part of that's for VA error, part of that's because I failed. And part of that is because the veteran didn't go to the exams that were required. So and then 21 veterans are 100% or have total disabilities for unemployability and are paid at a 100% rate. Let's, do you have any questions about the program or veterans?
So for people that would like to get ahold of you or your office, the contact information, if you can.
Yes, I think that's on the, the last slide. And I, I know I am sometimes hard to get ahold of. Like I was at a week-long conference recently and the office is shut down when I'm gone. So there's a bit of a backlog, but we're working on it. Any other questions?
I will, I make a comment. You, obviously you and I have spoken a couple of times and the folks that you work with are certainly in much greater need of benefits than I. But we've shared our story where I was at Camp Lejeune at a time where they had contaminated water. Part of PACD Act stuff was recognizing, I think, 14 or 16 different cancers that they could tie to that experience. And so if you have one of those cancers, you're automatically covered. Well, in my mid-40s, I developed prostate cancer. And one in a thousand people that get prostate cancer get it in that age range. Nobody in my family's ever had it before. And yet the VA excludes that one from coverage. The other thing I found out that was interesting is that the water was on base housing where my wife lived with me and she's not covered. So if she were to develop something, she's not covered, but I am, but not for this. So it's, it is a very real struggle that she fights on behalf of these folks. And I'm, I'm really thankful for that. You know, in my case, I'm obviously not disabled. I am, I suffered a lot of expense for the surgery and medications and all that kind of stuff for a while. But we have so many people that suffer so gravely. And so I'm just so appreciative that you're here, doing what you do and fighting through a really, really tough bureaucracy. Thank you.
No, thank you. It's an absolute honor. I appreciate all of the support. I mean, Liz has given me so much leeway and support. It's incredible. And I appreciate the support of the Board in Trent and it's, it's wonderful. It's an honor.
Jennifer, I just wanted to make a statement before I read your proclamation. I ran the store down the road there for about three decades now, 30 years. And for the majority of those 30 years, the public was not happy with the VA and, and the help. Since you've came along, it has been a dramatic change in the way they feel, the money they get, the, the treatment that they get. I mean, it's life-changing to so many people. And I see so many veterans in my store all the time. I can't tell you how, you know, to change one life is, is huge. To change as many lives as you have is unbelievable. And I can't tell you how much they love what you do for them.
It's awful kind. Thank you. I wish I could take all the credit, but there's a culture shift, so that helps.
And I did want you to know Bob Finley gives me a monthly update on you.
He's awesome.
So I know exactly what's going on there. But thank you so much. You did a wonderful job.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. I, I brought some members of the VFW to receive the proclamation, if that's okay. Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 7705, they've been leading the charge for helping the morale and the welfare of veterans. Like if somebody needs their electric bill paid or their lights put back on, they take care of it immediately. They do the honor guard for the parade. They put on the Memorial Day ceremony. And they're amazing bunch of guys, so. Oh, Walt, sorry Walt. That's Walt Scott's a service officer. Bruce Black is the commander and Vietnam veterans.
Okay, Jennifer, thank you. I'll read your proclamation now. A proclamation of the Board of Supervisors of Trinity, of the County of Trinity, supporting Operation Green Light for veterans and recognizing November 2025 as Veterans and Military Family Month. Whereas the residents of Trinity County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for the men and the women who have selflessly served our county and this community in the armed forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of those who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedom and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Trinity County seeks to honor those individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas veterans and their families make our country stronger and exemplify time-honored traits and duties, loyalties, selfless service, integrity, and personal courage. And whereas Veterans Day has been set aside as the day all Americans pay tribute to the men and women who have risked their lives to preserve the liberty of our nation. And whereas each November, we honor the invaluable contributions of both veterans and military families in Trinity County. And whereas Trinity County recognizes, supports, appreciates our veterans and military families year-round, especially during National Veterans and Military Families Month each November. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of Trinity County do hereby proclaim November as National Veterans and Military Families Month. In observance of Green Light, Operation Green Light, the Board encourages all communities throughout Trinity County to acknowledge and honor the service of veterans by displaying a green light in the window of the residence or place of business from the evening of November 4th, 2025 through number 11th, 2025, duly passed and adopted this 4th day of November till 2025 by the Board of Supervisors of Trinity County.
I will second.
Supervisor Luke Wyler? Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Brownfield?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Chair, may I make a quick statement?
Sure can.
On the screen in front of you, you'll see a beautiful rendition of Operation Green Light that you just read the proclamation for. That's last night in front of the courthouse. There are similar photos from last year about the same time. So we'll use the various photos that'll be taken and push them out there on social media posts and other platforms to highlight, you know, what we're doing on behalf of Operation Green Light and Veterans and Military Family Month in addition to, you know, just the beauty that that brings to the area.
Yep, we will certainly be having green lights at our store. Okay, we will move on to the public comment section. This time is for information from the public on matters not appearing on the agenda or within the consent calendar. All comments are limited to three minutes. Oh, sorry, one second. So we should have had a update from the US Forest Service due to the national, to the federal shutdown. Again, we'll be waiting for them to make their appearance when they can. We will now move on to public comment. This time is for information from the public on matters not appearing on the agenda or within the consent calendar. All comments are limited to three minutes. And. Did I not get page? So I did. And must pertain to matters within jurisdiction of the Board. When addressing the Board, please state your name for the record and address the Board as a whole through the Chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the Chair may refer the subject matter to the appropriate department for follow-up or schedule the matter on a subsequent Board agenda. Do we have any public comment in the room? Dan, good morning.
Morning Liam. Chair, Board, Staff, nice to see everybody again. I'm here again asking you to put the Lake Mountain Road on the agenda so we can discuss it. There are definitely ways to fix the road without taking from anything important. All it will cost is fuel to run the grader and the backhoe, to pull the ditches and clean off the outside. DuraPatch cost is approximately $2,000 per mile, since there's enough chip rock out there to do it. So the cost to maintain this road for a year would be less than 60 grand, including the fuel that's already in the budget. And all I keep hearing is that there's not enough money. So for context, I went to page 1319 in your budget because the tax collector is on the agenda today. So I figured that's a good one. So their budget went from $567,000 to $928,000. That's an increase of $365,000 bucks, which would maintain this road and fund the library. So the library doesn't have to go outside, go look for outside funding. So what changed for the tax collector that they need another $365,000? Did the amount of parcels in the county increase that much? So $60,000 to maintain a road that your DOT is claiming to spend $279,000 on seems like a pretty good deal. Thanks, guys. Have a great day. Have a great day.
Thank you, Dan. Any other public comment in the room? Ben, good morning.
Good morning, Liam.
Good morning.
Staff, board, how's everyone doing today? Happy holidays. That actually runs a little darker this year with all the things that are going on with snap cuts and the shutdown. But I come today because I think the board can do something. I think the county can do something. So the backstory, we all know, SNAP with the government shutdown is gone for the time being. However, two appeals court judges ruled that the federal government has to reinstitute SNAP. However, the administration is only funding at 50%. That's not a lot of money for people that are hurting, especially in this county. The USDA this morning notified all grocery stores that they are not to give subsidized food in their store. They can't sell it, period. So our people in this county are getting less money to buy food, but they're not allowed to buy subsidized food anymore. You can look it up. You can Google it. It's all over the news. USDA, straight up. So I've been looking online, and because of all this, there are counties that are giving emergency funds to their food banks for this. Now, why can't we do that? We should put something up on the docket for the next board meeting and have a discussion about some emergency funds. The county puts it aside every year. Let's put some money aside, give it to the food bank, so our neighbors, our friends, don't go hungry this year. I know lots of people who are making dire decisions on whether or not they're eating, whether or not their kids are eating, how often. So let's have the conversation. We all talk about, you know, if we had the money to do this or that. If we can't find the money to do this, we don't have the money to do anything. Thank you.
Any other public comment in the room? On Zoom?
I show no raised hands.
I just got a message here. I don't know if it's working or not yet, but one of my constituents just texted me and says, hey, I don't know if it's just me, but the agenda page for today's meeting won't open on the county website. The rest of my internet is functioning properly, though. I'll keep on trying. I got on through the link on the agenda on the citizens' notification.
Perhaps I can go to the county website.
Okay. Good enough. Okay, we will move on to reports and announcements.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Christine Gaffney, Outer Controller. I just wanted to add a few things to just kind of status updates of our office. We're now in the second quarter of our new fiscal year, and the Outer Controller's office has completed the balling task for the first quarter while still maintaining daily, weekly, semi-annual, and monthly deadlines. We had a successful property tax rollover, unsecured extension and secured extension. We also calculated the tax rates and the AB8 factors and did our annual report to the state. We have thus far processed 419 tax refunds and 898 rule changes and finalized the 2324 audit and single audit. One more announcement is that the County of Trinity has received an award from the State Controller's Office for the excellence in financial transactions reporting for fiscal year 2324. This recognition highlights the Trinity County's commitment to accuracy, transparency, and excellence in financial reporting. The report was prepared and submitted by our contracted CPA Rodney Craig Goodman and reflects the dedication and diligence of Mr. Goodman and the Trinity County's fiscal staff. And when I say fiscal staff, I mean all departments, not just my office. We're all a part of it. And their thorough processing and auditing of all financial transactions make this achievement possible. So I just wanted to say a sincere thank you. Thank you to Craig Goodman and the Trinity County Fiscal Team for their outstanding work and continued commitment for fiscal transparency and integrity. Currently, in the next, this quarter through January, we'll be working on the fiscal year end processing. The audit is scheduled for January 12th, compilation for the budget book that is due to the state December 1st and the cost plan, which is due for December 31st. We have a cost plan audit coming in the spring. The dates are still to be determined. And we are working with the Treasurer's Office in the first quarter interest apportionment. We're continuously cross-training in payroll and property taxes. We are working with the applicable departments for updating travel policy, cash handling policy, and the CalCard policy. And I'll be bringing the GAN calculation to you in the beginning of December. We continue our work with our contractor in the programming and building of our accounting database for timelier and more efficient processing to better serve our customers.
Thank you.
Liz, good morning.
Good morning, Chair. Members of the board, Liz Hamilton, Director of Health and Human Services. I wanted to announce that we have selected an Office of Emergency Services Coordinator. Sunny DeMello has been appointed to that position as of the first of this month. So I will be sending out an announcement to our disaster council members, and please join in congratulating her in that role. We have, well, and I will also just say, I'm so proud of Jennifer, and I'm always just love when she comes and does a presentation for the board. She is tenacious, and she is such an excellent advocate. So I just appreciate the work that she's doing. And of course, her presentation helps to lay the groundwork for my future ask of getting support staff for her in that program area. So I'll put in the plug. As to SNAP, there, an update that we received this morning is, and of course, you know, consistent with public comment, USDA is navigating lawsuits that were initiated by Rhode Island. And we expect to hear results today if they're going to use contingency funds to fund the program in full. We should know that either today or if it will be a partial 50% allocation by tomorrow end of business day on Wednesday. If it is a partial benefit package, they will be working on what's called an issuance table to decide how, a portion, how they would do a 50% payout to members that are enrolled in that program. It will take one to three weeks before funds would be shifted to, you know, the electronic benefits transfer card themselves. So I will keep you updated as we know, and of course, we will advise the public and those members directly. We will wait, once we have a federal direction, we will wait for California's direction on if they will do something different with their contingency funds or not. So more to come in that space. And then I want to highlight for accreditation, we do have an item on consent calendar for a letter of support from the board. But I want to just highlight that this is an effort of our Public Health Department for the last couple of years to build towards a heightened standard of how we deliver service in public health. This is a heavy lift that we have staff dedicated to. Not every county in California has achieved this status, and I'm really proud of us as a small county. I think there are one or two others that have achieved this, and I am proud that we are well on our way to our application being submitted. So I think that is it for today, unless you have any questions.
What was the, remind me, the first part of that about the, what you're applying for?
An accreditation status.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
One second, Liz. I had a question for you. So I was a little confused between what Ben was saying about grocers not being able to sell certain things. Is that what I got from that?
I have not heard that update, so I have no comment on that, but I can do further research.
And I haven't, as a grocer, we have not been notified of anything like that either, so I'm not sure.
My formal chain of notification has not shared that information.
I'm sure we would have by now at a store too, so.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any of the department heads in the room? Sheriff Saxon, how are you this morning?
Doing well, sir, and yourself?
I'm fine.
Outstanding. Chair, board members, Tim Saxon, sheriff. Quick update. Hiring continues to be our main focus at this time. Last week, we were able to start a lateral deputy who had previously worked for us, and they're a welcome addition back to Trinity County. Very happy to have them back. We have reserved two places for the January post academy at Siskiyou College for new deputies, so we're excited about that. We are in background process for two potential lateral deputies, for deputies. That is contingent upon the background package coming back clear, and we'll move forward on that. Unknown timeframe on that. Hiring in the corrections dispatch classification continues. And as I've reported in the past, that's an ongoing process because we test, we complete background investigations. Part of that is a psychological and medical. Once we clear them, we hire them, we train them. And then many times, those employees decide that corrections is not the career path that they wish to take, so they move on and we start that process all over again. So that's a continuing system that we go through. Recently, we hired three, we lost two. We hire two, we lose three. I mean, it's a continual thing. So at two meetings ago, I indicated that we had all the allocated positions filled, and we did. And now we have two vacancies, and so we're continuing to fill those. Jail health, it's continuing to move in a positive direction with cooperation and teamwork with HHSA. We recently had a meeting where we formalized moving forward on some additional areas of healthcare on that. So we're extremely happy with that from the jail side and working with CAO's office and with HHSA. We're excited about the funding that's continuing to come in and the prospects of hiring potentially additional nursing staff. We are experiencing a current issue with our vehicle fleet. We anticipate receiving new vehicles from Enterprise, as we've talked about. And, but right now, as a result of the last three years of budget cuts and the restrictions that we had on purchasing new vehicles, the existing fleet that we have outside of the Enterprise vehicles, those vehicles are failing. So we are now having to reach into some contingency money that we had and some cash carryover in order to repair the older fleet that we had in the situation right now, red tag because of engine and transmission problems. We're having to reach into that, take those, find the ones that we can possibly repair and get those running while we wait for the replacement vehicles to come in. So just wanted to keep you aware of that, that that is going to somewhat impact our budget right now. But we're having to do what we have to do. I guess you could say what a bad problem it is to have more people coming onboard and not have vehicles. So as you recall, last year at this time, we didn't have any deputies available to respond to calls. Now we're building up to where we have deputies responding to the calls. We just need to have vehicles so that they can go to the calls. So anyway, we're working on that issue there. That's my report. Any questions?
Do you ever do foot patrol, Main Street?
Actually, yeah, we've done that before. We're looking at bicycles. We're also looking at horses, but horses are actually more expensive than cars.
Ununderstandable.
Amen. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment in the room?
Department head.
I mean, department, excuse me. I don't see any.
Chair, I will report for the Community Development Department. There's a department head report that's on the department webpage, as all our previous department head reports, going back to the summer timeframe on the webpage for anyone's interest in previewing those.
Any of the department heads in the room? CEO Todd Hill.
Thank you, Chair. I've got a couple items to report on. So our homeless encampment activities, we met again last week, and the group that is working that effort will now be known as HART, Homeless Assistance Resource Team. So that includes representation from probation, HHSA, Sheriff's Office, DOT, environmental health, admin, HRN, and really anyone else who is willing to join in with these efforts. The team met, and we reviewed the last camp observations. And, you know, unfortunately, there are definitely some areas where we have small encampments that are growing again and are established again. We're working and planning enforcement activities that need to take place. We do need to have some adequate storage facilities to place property when these enforcement activities happen, and we are working that effort as we speak. We also just want the board to understand that, you know, these enforcement efforts do take resources and time. And there is, you know, no specific outlet or effort that's been put in any individual department's budget for this. So as we just continually to work through this effort, there may be some further discussion on, you know, prioritization and timing and how our enforcement efforts look. We, in fact, do have a good ordinance. You know, we have the backbone to provide these enforcement activities. It's just going to be how we, as a county, want to prioritize these efforts. So that will probably be for, you know, future type of discussion. But just know there are actions that are ongoing and taking place periodically. From the California Association of County Executives Conference, which is all of the 58 county CEOs, some of the deputies, and some other staff members from the counties that get together, and it's probably a little bit less like, less vendors, less like showmanship than like CSAC or RCRC or those big conferences. It's more just kind of on the ground, working, no frills type of discussions. And we had a good update from Pat Blotlock from RCRC. There was a good Sacramento policy update for what took place in legislative session in 2025, and then what is upcoming for 2026. Dr. Eiler was there, provided an interesting economic outlook presentation and discussion on behalf of the entire state, you know, and some various counties highlighted. But all of the state data was used in his presentation. The County Medical Services Program also provided an update and overview. That's an organization that serves 35 counties, which Trinity is included in that for a very specific, small subset of medical services. And there was some discussion about leadership hiring strategies and kind of, I would say, an idea or more of a focus on, you know, maybe shorter time periods for certain leadership positions versus kind of the old adage of maybe decades ago of where certain people sit in positions for longer periods of times, like, you know, decades. The trend seems to be shorter periods of time that individuals are staying at the hired leadership positions, which affects recruitments, which affects how you go and fill these positions within a county government structure. So it was a good session, but overall, good topics, and those have all been shared with county staff. As you've heard in public comment and that Liz referenced, you know, the government shutdown is ongoing, and that does affect some of our local programs. And I believe we're doing everything we can to make sure that those affected are aware as far as, you know, the messaging part of that. We've been using social media platforms. We've been using social media platforms, we've been using our county newsletter, we've been using the county website to all push this information out. Individuals affected have got, you know, direct engagement from the program. So more to come on that as the larger government figures out what they're going to do. We have a short-term plan for our county building official. We will use a rehire to new it to fill that position short-term, which means it's going to be on a part-time basis. Jim Santiago approached us when he knew Cody was departing and is willing to come back for a short period of time in a part-time basis to fill some of those needs. And we're grateful for that. I had a meeting with them, we've reached some agreements, and we've got adequate budget to take care of this. And between he and Miles, who is our current building inspector, we're going to be able to keep things moving and keep projects moving along as needed. So happy for that, and we'll continue the effort for the longer-term fill with that. In the recruitment front, we have our Community Development Department Head position advertised. We have interviews scheduled for November 20th and hope to fill that position shortly after that. That's just an update for the board, for the vacant department head position. And then, as Sheriff Saxon mentioned, you know, we had a jail health executive meeting last week. And, you know, as Sheriff mentioned, you know, we're very happy and satisfied with the progress we've been making. But I just want to echo some of his sentiments that, you know, these efforts are a big team effort. And, you know, we have, I mean, we talked about things from, you know, medical providers to prescriptions to staffing to funding. You know, everything was discussed down to pretty good detail. And the right people are there. We're making some good progress. And I think with continued focus on this area, we will continue on the path we're on. It's not where everybody would like to be at the end, but we're making good progress. And I just want to say, you know, thank you to all those involved. Some are sitting in the room today, you know, who have been leading the effort. But it has been a true team effort to move this significant significant challenge that we have faced in the new jail to get us to where we're at today. And I think with the actions of the team, we have been able to move in the right direction and we will hope to continue to stay on that path. And that's all I've got for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Brownfield.
Hello, everyone. So I continue to work with small. Okay, so I continue to work with small groups in my communities. They're very spread out, so and there's very different facets of communities where I am and different needs. So I'm working very closely with each one of those, still trying to figure out what the best way forward is for different areas and different needs that they have, roads, safety, services, those types of things. And our community is amazing. We have a lot of wonderful people that get together when things are not going right. And so my, with the government shutdown, I think I'll be getting together with most of our communities to see if we can't do some of our own community outreach to each other. In other words, turkeys and food and delivering meals to the elderly, those types of things I think we can really do to pick up the slack in the reins to help our communities. We have some great things coming up in our community. We have the fire department having a cornhole tournament on the 15th of November on Saturday. So we hope to see a lot of people there. We've had craft fairs, they've been very successful. And so that is my report. No outside travel.
Thank you, Supervisor Cox.
Good morning. I have no out-of-county travel to report. For our first five commission, the annual audit report, the annual report, and the projected 25, 26 fiscal year budgets were all adopted. For NorCal EMS, we are still in transition from the nonprofit to the JPA. Delays have been problematic in the state. And now with the government shutdown, federal delays continue that difficulty. So this has been an unusual season with the nonprofit still doing the work that the JPA was signed over to be doing. So with that, the JPA has hired Derek Cole as our counsel, and he is enjoying working through this process. It's fun to watch him get excited about figuring this out. So with that, you can expect to see another agreement with a resolution accompanying that before you on the 18th for adoption, just so you have a heads up. The Fire Safe Council has their Community Wildfire Protection Plan out for public review. So you have an opportunity to engage with that document and provide your feedback. I attended HRN's 45th Anniversary Celebration, which was so impressive, so fun to watch their slideshow and look back. Over 45 years of partnership with that nonprofit, working together with the community and the needs that they have met and the heart that is present there, the folks that have given their wholehearted effort. So that was a wonderful celebration. And then there will be a LAPCO meeting at 4 o'clock in this room, and that's the end of my report.
Okay, thank you. I had a couple meetings canceled last week, both with federal agencies for service and one other. Trent Patrick Flynn, our environmental specialist here that works for Trinity County and Trinity River Restoration Program. Trent, Patrick, and I met with Steve Madrone and Hank Seaman, their environmental fisheries specialist in Humboldt County. And Steve Madrone is the supervisor of District 5. District 5 is the district that touches the Trinity River. And, you know, it was a good meeting, no deals were made, no handshakes, no nothing. We just sat down for an hour or so between the five of us and tried to figure out, moving forward, what would be the best way for Trinity County and Humboldt County to get together to help this river stay healthy, have more fish, and what we could do to just do the best we can. Up until now, Trinity County and Humboldt County really haven't worked very closely together. But we would like to change that, we're eager for that, and they are eager for that. So it was a very productive meeting. We have meetings that will be ongoing. And we hope that they are fruitful and we're optimistic, and so are they. I will be taking a ride around District 3 Hayfork, mostly with the Fire Department Chief Leroy Warshaw this week to pick out some of the homeless encampments and kind of prioritize those, whether they're public or private. And shortly thereafter, I will have an open house or town hall meeting, which I think will be heavily attended by the people, on the 20th, Thursday the 20th of this month, at 6:00 PM at the Roderick Center. And that is it for me. Supervisor Leweller.
Okay. Well, Supervisor Cox and I must have been there slightly different times, but I agree with the HRN 45th Anniversary Celebration was really great and happy to be there. A Nortech Board Meeting took place in Chico since our last meeting. That was the first time with our newly hired executive director, and it went very well. I have the pleasure of co-chairing that with Susan Marie, who's here with us today. The Tourism Funding Ad-Hoc Committee met, and we will be providing an update later today. But basically, we're providing, or meeting to review applications and to prepare today's update. I participated in the quarterly jail health meetings that were alluded to by CAO Tuthill and Sheriff Saxon. I would echo, it's really amazing how much progress has been made. And even as CAO Tuthill said, we're not where we want to be. I also recognize that we are far ahead of others in the progress that's been made. There's very few that have kind of made the leap forward, including even, I heard staff saying that when they talk to other counties, they said, "Well, how are you even getting the correctional officers to do all this tracking that's helping you do all this?" And we're kind of taking it for granted and just wishing it was a little bit better. But it's a heavy lift, as stated, but it's making a huge difference, not only in the quality of healthcare, but also in the funding that's available to us that is taking some pressure off of our budget. I joined CAO Tuthill for an hour or so conversation with Senator Adam Schiff's field representative for our region, Wesley Fink. He reached out to ask for some time to learn more about Trinity County priorities, needs, so that he could bring that back to the senator. And I reached out to CAO Tuthill, who joined me for that, which was great because, you know, he's much closer to all the big things that really need to have the attention of the senator. So it was a great conversation. CSAC has something called Challenge Awards, which is to recognize counties that are doing innovative work, ideally that is very scalable and repeatable. So it's not only innovative, but other counties could learn from it and do it. And so I was invited to participate as one of the panel members for that. So I think it was around 20 different applications that I reviewed and provide feedback on. I think they will be presenting those awards in our meeting coming up later this month, or the first of December. And I look forward to sharing that with you because there were some really great ideas that people have implemented, some more doable for us and more relevant for us. But still, it was really interesting to look at that. I will be leaving tomorrow for the Economic Development Summit that I've mentioned a couple times in Lake County. Our county will be represented in a number of different ways, including the cannabis tourism panel that I'll be hosting. We have two representatives that will be on the panel. And this should be a good turnout. I think we have over, somewhere between 125, 150 people that have signed up to be there for this Economic Development Summit. I had the honor of emceeing the Lewiston Fire Chief Transition, you know, something you don't see all the time. But we had probably 100 or so people show up as Chief Mel Deardorff after pretty close to 50 years of providing fire service, support service in various jurisdictions. Didn't quite retire, as I gave him a hard time for, because he's actually, he's handing over the chief reins to Chuck Colby, but he's still staying on as administrative captain to help with all of the paperwork and all of those things. So and it was great, I think, in part to see the fire chiefs from other fire departments and from CAL FIRE there. I think just really lifting up someone who has committed so much of their life to serving others and then, you know, welcoming in our new chief. And last thing here on the list is Airport Advisory Committee. I wasn't quite in the loop initially that we were in the process, but I did receive several applications for the District 1 appointee to the Airport Advisory Committee. And my understanding is that this will be on our next agenda. So it was great to see, you know, sometimes we're struggling to find anyone to step up. So when there were three or four that wanted to raise their hand for District 1, that was really good to see. So we'll look forward to that. That's it.
Supervisor Leweller.
Yes.
Chair, if I could. With that, I think we have a little bit of a misunderstanding. I had some email communication with Sarah Saad at DOT. And apparently, the Airport Advisory Committee does not work similarly to the way that our Planning Commission works. So it doesn't have to be somebody who lives in your district who then is appointed there. So where we do have openings, we have had multiple letters of interest. So I think that offline, we should probably speak to those folks because it appears that we may have enough people to fill all of those positions. And I see county council looking at me with a "What? Am I correct?" Okay, okay, great. Okay, very good.
That'd be great, because we often don't have people from some of the districts.
Indeed, and now we have a lot of interest. Okay, very good.
Well, if you do not, so as long as we have enough to fill, that would be great. Last but not least, Supervisor Carpenter Harris, which was another one of her asks of me, besides not doing the Pledge of Allegiance. So this better be good.
Well, I asked to not leave the pledge because of my throat. So it has nothing to do with not wanting to lead the pledge. It's just my voice today is not all the way robust. I just want to speak towards the report out on veterans and thank everyone who works in that arena. This weekend in Salier, we are having our annual vendor and local artisans fair. And all veterans will be getting a free coffee and a sweet treat from the gazebo that is serving those items in Salier. So if you're there and you're a veteran, please come and get your free coffee and sweet treat. I also have no out-of-county travel to report, but I've certainly been engaged with constituents and fielding questions with deep concerns about our roads, some problems with folks not understanding the new assessment of their homes with assessors and tax collector, and then just a few people, you know, seeking more more law enforcement in our community. And I'm super grateful to hear from Sheriff Saxon that people are being hired. And now we just have to get them on the road with some safe wheels. So I am hopeful that we will see more Trinity County deputy vehicles all over our county, especially in the far-reaching communities. I just want to take this time to make an announcement that I will not be running for a second term for the Board of Supervisors. I set aside a number of opportunities to serve in this role, and it is time to pick those back up. I have served on boards and councils, large and small, for over 20 years. I will remain a very active citizen and hope to engage in more advocacy work on behalf of rural Americans, the ranching community, timber, and agriculture. My international humanitarian relief work is very important to me, and I will be moving towards those opportunities that have been brought forward to me at this time. My work in West County will continue, and I will continue to serve to the best of my ability through my church, local organizations, and my tribe. Next year, as chair, I will embrace the opportunity with the whole heart and tremendous enthusiasm, not only seeking to serve the people of my district, but the whole of county. Trinity County is my home. As was mentioned, I was born here in this hospital, right down the road 50, let's just be, I'll tell the truth, 55 years ago. My birth date was supposed to be November 1st, but Dr. Polka and Dr. Breeden's football teams were playing against each other, and they said my mother must delay the scheduled C-section until after those football games were done, and that landed on November 4th. My birthday is often on Election Day, and I think that was a telltale sign for my life. I have always paid attention to politics and government. From the time I was a small child, I sat in the living room on my knees and watched the presidential addresses as far back as Jimmy Carter. And I can remember telling my dad that when I had kids, I was going to always make them listen and respect the president regardless of their party and that we should all play an active role in government. I was raised to do that, and I will continue to do that. Trinity County matters to me. I will continue to support and honor the legacy of this region, and I will continue to promote stewardship of our landscapes, our waters, and our people. And I will look forward to the horizons for opportunities that will continue to make Trinity County grow. And I will never step aside from serving the people, although it may not be in this seat. So thank you for all of you who have allowed me to have this position. I look forward to next year, and I will do my best to honor that role that I was given when I swore to do my best by this county, this state, and this United States. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you for everything you've done the last three years, eight months. And you have 14 months left, 12 of them you'll be chair. And I think you'll do a great job of it. So thank you very much for everything you've done.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the consent calendar. These items include routine, non-contraditional matters and will be acted upon by the board by one roll call motion. If a member of the public has any questions or comments on an item on the consent calendar, they may provide them now. A member of the board or staff may request an item be pulled or considered separately. Do we have?
I'd like to pull D-10 and D-10 and D-13.
D-10 and D-13. Okay, do we have any public comment in the room?
Chairman Goggin, apologies before we go there, if you're talking about agenda items. Item D-9 should have been agendized as Transportation Commission instead of just transportation. So I just want to make that clarity, that when you guys are acting upon that item, you're acting as the Transportation Commission and not the Board of Supervisors.
Did you catch that?
D-9.
She's pulling it?
So we need to pull that for discussion.
Okay, Veronica, good morning.
Good morning. Veronica Kelly Albies, Weaverville, Douglas City, Parks and Rec. First off, happy birthday, Carpenter-Harris. I wanted to speak on D-4. I have had the pleasure of working with Isabella Main as a lifeguard for our district, and she spent time as a, volunteering as a junior lifeguard before she was old enough for us to actually hire her. She is incredibly articulate, intelligent, hardworking, and all the other amazing words that I can just throw out there. Young woman, she is a leader in the making, and she'd be a great asset for this board. Just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment in the room? On Zoom?
I show no raised hands.
Okay, we'll take a roll call motion to pass all the items except for the ones that were pulled, which were?
So I can make a motion to approve all items other than D-9, D-10, and D-13?
Aye.
Supervisor Lutwiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Brownfield?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter-Harris?
Aye.
Okay, Suzie, you are up first.
Apologies, during the panelists, I think, is on also to address any other questions you have, but this one was pulled just for an administrative oversight. This item, we need the board to take action on this item as the Transportation Commission. And so just to clarify that the department this one is agendized under should be Transportation Commission and not just transportation.
And so we still carry forward, though, in the same process. We still just review, make a motion. We just need to do it representing as the Transportation Commission.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So I'll move to approve as presented.
I will second.
Supervisor Goggin?
Aye.
Supervisor Lutwiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Brownfield?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter-Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Brownfield, you are up with D-10.
Approve Amendment Number One to the agreement. Approve Amendment Number One to the agreement with Wood Rogers, Inc., increasing the maximum amount by $800,000 to provide disaster engineering services. So if the transportation department is online, I'd just like an explanation for that because it's an awful lot of money. And back in May, we also allocated $800,000 for another engineer, and I think we have three on staff, so. And the department is saying we don't have much funds, so this, this to me, it comes from the RMRA, which is the Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Account, which could be used for our road in, that Dan has brought up on Zinnia Lake Mountain Road. So please let me know if there's, if this is absolutely necessary. Or explain why you need it.
This consultant is the one who has been helping us prepare plans for the damage on Route Zinnia Road 18.75. They're also going to help us prepare the plans for the Van Duzen Road and other damaged areas that we have in the vicinity. And it's funded by FEMA, ER, and the RMRA funds are used upfront now until we get reimbursed by both ER, Federal Highways, and FEMA, and that can take several years. That's why we're using RMRA funds. If we don't use the RMRA funds to fund this project and use it for other purposes that are kind of questionable based on what they hear, we will not be able to repair some of the severe damage in that area. Because when we're given the authority to do the work that's known as advanced construction in federal highways, it can take up to five, six years to be reimbursed. So it's up to the board to repair the major damages ahead of the time or let them be worse because you do not have the capabilities of doing the engineering and the repairs.
Okay, it says potentially offset by FEMA, so that concerns me a little bit that we don't get those money, those funds reimbursed.
Potentially because we do not have the approval yet. It takes some time to get it approved. However, Route Zinnia, actually Van Duzen Road, the big slide can get worse if we don't do anything about it. So we're working with FEMA, we're trying to get things approved, and especially now if a government shutdown, it takes for a while. Approved or not approved by FEMA, Van Duzen Road, it's a major road, and if that area goes south, there will be no connection to State Route 36.
Okay, good to know. Thank you very much.
That suffice for you, Supervisor Brownfield?
Yes, it does.
Do we have any other discussion on the board?
I will make a motion to approve.
Public comment, I think.
Public comment in the room? On Zoom? Take a roll call motion.
I will make a motion to approve D-9.
I'll second.
Supervisor Carpenter-Harris, or Supervisor Cox, I'm so sorry.
Aye.
Excuse me. Supervisor Carpenter-Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Lutwiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Brownfield?
Aye.
Supervisor Goggin?
Aye. D-13, Supervisor Brownfield, you are up.
Treasure Tax Collector, adopt a resolution which distributes excess proceeds from the 2324 Tax Defaulted Property Tax Auction. I have a little bit of problem, I have a problem with proceeds from properties being sold. You want to explain what this is first, and I can, we can discuss it after? Go ahead.
Absolutely. So everything to do with the tax sale is very specific in how we process and what we do. What takes place is, just as a reminder, a property tax sale is to return a delinquent property to revenue generating status. That is the sole purpose of a tax sale. So just want to state that piece first. Then what happens is we establish, we are only, this is not-for-profit, so we are only allowed to sell the property for the taxes that are owed and any expenses that we have incurred, and that is all laid out very specific. So when we offer a property at an auction, we establish a minimum bid. And once that minimum bid has been reached, if it is above what that minimum bid is, that's what we call then excess proceeds. What takes place after that is we're required to hold those funds for a year, and we are required certain notifications that we do to all parties of interest. And those parties of interest, anyone who thinks they're a party of interest can then submit a claim for those excess proceeds. There's specific requirements and order of priority and such that we are required to do, which we have. And so that what you have here is those excess proceeds that remain above and beyond what's been paid for, the minimum bids for the properties.
Okay. I'm worried that when we do that, we incentivize the purchase and the sale of tax default properties for the proceeds. And so what I would like to see is that money given back to the landowner instead of kept in our, I understand that we're at, that we have, you know, a budget problem, but that's, that's just my opinion.
My role is not-for-profit. My role is just to serve the public and to make sure that we are recuperating the cost of expenses taken. It's not in excess. So these, the all parties of interest, and when I say that, I mean the prior owner, any lien holders, anyone that is a part, that is truly a party of interest, they are provided a claim form. We send them notifications, so the prior owners are allowed to submit a claim. They are required to do certain actions with that claim or by proof of that claim. So these are people that did not submit the required paperwork to receive those funds. That's laid out by law. That is not a choice from my office. That's a matter of fact. That's what the law says. They did not do as they were required to do in order to receive those funds. We go above and beyond what's required. We do all these additional searches to try to reach out to people if we have any return mail, to make sure if we have a phone number, or if we know somebody who knows that person, we reach out to those people to try to, we, if we want them to be able to have those funds. But if they don't comply with what's required, I cannot, we cannot provide that to them.
We're talking about the money up and beyond what the taxes?
We are. And so they, they cannot, if they did not do what they were supposed to by law, they cannot receive those funds. That's not how that works. It's very specific.
State law?
It is. Revenue Taxation Code, Government Code. I have quite a few codes that that is applicable to them, and they, they cannot be paid for that. They, it goes against all the rules.
Thank you very much for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
Public comment in the room? On Zoom?
I show no raised hands.
I'll move to approve. D-13 is presented.
Second.
Supervisor Goggin?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Lutwiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Brownfield?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter-Harris?
Aye.
Chair, if I may, just before we move on, I wanted to kind of honor the public comment about Isabella Main. I've sit on that Behavioral Health Board, and she was there in the last meeting, and I actually asked her the question. So help me, why do you want to be on this board? And it was just so impressive that you have a teenager stepping up to say, well, you know, this is important to me. I think it's important to our community, and I want to be involved, and I want to learn more. And the maturity level is so far beyond what I was at that age. I was truly impressed. So thank you for calling that out, and I didn't want to miss the opportunity to reinforce that message. Thank you.
Yeah, she's a great girl, one of the ones, you know, that, what are you more of? So great choice, and she'll do great. She'll be a great person. We need to take a break. We'll take a break and come back at 10:35. Take a nine-minute break. Take a nine-minute break. Okay, we will begin with county matters. These items include non-routine or controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the Board, Staff, or Public may request that an item be heard out of order. Do we have any items that will be heard out of order? Okay, we will start with E1, Human Resources. Approve a revised driving policy for Trinity County employees. No fiscal impact. CEO Tuthil?
Chair, I will be requesting we move this item to the next agenda. The actual driving policy, it's the updated actual driving policy itself was inadvertently left off the agenda item. The old county policy is on there, but the new one is not. So, that one has not gone through the proper public notification process. So, no action will be taken on this, and we'll just put it on the next agenda.
Move on the 18th?
Yep.
Okay. E2, Order Controller. Adopt a resolution approving coverage of 1,000 deposit shortage in the Kansas Division with general fund dollars.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Does anybody have any questions for me or the Kansas Department?
I think all my questions were answered in the backstory.